I'd like to call this meeting to order with the clerk please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Councilmember Avery?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do. I'd like to make a request to add a resolution honoring Dave Trean to the agenda right after the first public comment period. It's the number four. And then to add discussion of budget amendment number seventeen and the contract for the construction of the recreational maintenance facility as the last item under new business. So E under new business.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Nobody signed up.
Dave Trean, would you join me at the podium? We want to invite you back to get your own personal resolution.
Nice glasses, like it.
Whereas Dave Trean worked as an interim town manager for Town of Jamestown for over a year, and whereas he has more than forty years of experience managing local governments in North Carolina, and whereas Mr. Trean was the perfect person to work for the town for interim period because of his unique skills as a mentor and organizational interventionist, and whereas his focus and work on the town's strategic plan will positively impact the community for years to come, and whereas his consistent and direct communication provided clarity on ways in which we can overcome obstacles, move towards a better future, and has left everyone happily Trean-ized. And whereas he reminded each of us every day that Jesus loves us and so did he, or at least he was trying. Now therefore, I, Lynn Montgomery, on behalf of the town council and our citizens, do hereby recognize and express our deep appreciation to Dave Trean for his dedication of his time, his talents to our community, and to convey our best wishes for the next chapter in the law.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Elizabeth Grayson, if you'll join me at the podium while I'm here?
Yes.
Pleasure. Elizabeth has been in charge of litter sweep for the past few years for us. We wanted her to accept this proclamation. Whereas North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes an annual spring statewide roadside cleanup to ensure clean and beautiful roads across our state, and whereas the Spring 2022 Litter Sweep will take place between April sixteenth and April thirtieth, and encourages local governments and communities, civic and professional groups, businesses, churches, schools, families, and individual citizens to participate in sponsoring and organizing local roadside cleanups. Whereas adopt a highway volunteers, Department of Transportation employees, Department of Public Safety, Division of Adult Correction inmates, community service workers, local government agencies, community leaders, civic and community groups, businesses, churches, schools, and environmentally concerned citizens conduct annual local cleanups throughout Spring Litter Sweep and may receive certificates of appreciation for their participation. And whereas the great natural beauty of our state and the cleanup environment, a cleaned-up environment, are sources of great pride for all North Carolinians, attracting tourists and aiding in recruiting new industries. And whereas the cleanup will increase awareness for the need of cleaner road sides, emphasize the importance of not littering, and encourage recycling of solid waste. And whereas the Spring Litter Sweep cleanup will be the thirty-eighth biannual celebration of the North Carolina Adopt a Highway and its forty-four hundred volunteer groups that donated labor and time year-round to keep our road sides clean. And whereas Spring Litter Sweep cleanup will be part of educating the children of this great state regarding the importance of a clean environment to the quality of life in North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Lynn Montgomery, Mayor of the Town of Jamestown, do hereby proclaim April ninth, twenty twenty-two, as Litter Sweep Day, in the Town of Jamestown, encourage all of our citizens to take an active role in making Jamestown a cleaner community. Thank you for what you've done. Do you have a report for us?
I do. I am so excited and so thankful that the town and the council offers us this opportunity. I have a couple of certificates that I want to just bring to the council. Some of you were missed that day, others of you came and had your hip boots on. I appreciate you all. And so many of our town came out this time, new people that had not participated in the past. So that was really special. Almost exciting to have key club members that are the ROTC from Raggedale Room, as well as our student council and a motoring club. And I did want to let you know that we had a couple of people that worked along railroad tracks and how all of that trash was there at Raggedale Road and Dillon Road Crossing and at Oakdale Road Crossing. So much was at that area that we routinely had not been able to... You know, younger people, we try not getting through those dangerous areas. We had a lot of adults with us. I'd like to just take a moment if I could send something to Catherine. Catherine Frager has been to our Litter Sweep, and she can be considered one of the youngest ones.
Wonderful. Oh, she'll love that. Thank you.
Yeah, and she can give that to her Girl Scout troop and the Brownie troop, because we do have certificates that we can send to our organizations to say thank you to them. But as you saw in your report, sixty-three bags, forty-three people. There was just a lot going on that day, and it was just a wonderful time to be together to keep Jamestown beautiful.
Thank you. We appreciate you organizing. Anna, would you present the annexation information?
Good evening. The public hearing for annexation was opened on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting under General Statute one sixty-eight, thirty-one. The town received...
That they needed some density, needed some density to make that possible. So we started the pathway, if we could, to see if we could make that... All of you are keen, public is keenly aware, public is keenly aware, about a week of to the neighborhood input into that. A hundred percent, a hundred percent neighbors suggested get in, but a tremendous, but a tremendous high percentage of Jamestown residents that got picked up into a, put into a... I'm actually very impressed by where we have to now is, to now is, we cannot commitments to them, or commitments to them, or thus on sharing items, sharing items, primarily in these than Sawyer study, than Sawyer study dealing with issues going forward, issues going forward. We also are sitting at a table of discussion of what those matters will take and how manifested, manifested, but discussing with them the status right now, of status right now, of development agreement that we're still trying to hammer out, trying to hammer. I'm aware that Ms. Nun will be asking for, Nun will be asking for innuance so that we can, with some response, with some response. From my, I think I'd be inappropriate for the town with ten, you said that we can, and you said that we can, discussions. I'm glad to answer, I'm glad to answer since you have.
How do you, how do you cooperate in things? Do you feel like you're getting what, do you feel like you're getting what, or do you feel like you're getting, do you feel like you're getting, the town is asking for?
I think that we, I think that we're going to get what the town for. Has it, has it reached my expectation? No, but no. But I think that it will.
How about the speed? Are concerned about, concerned about, you know, we've been, say, and giving a room day and giving a room extension or the year. Move a little faster for them. Feel about the take on what, feel about the take on what they've responded?
Their response to the, their response to the agreement? Is that the question? I was a bit, I was a bit at their, their on the development agreement a little bit, as to the origins of our agreement, but of our agreement, but back to those original, we had a very good meeting, we had a very good meeting. I think that there was a refresher of what the town, memory of what the town writing as to what it, expecting.
A little bit disappointing considering how much effort we've put into this.
I'm not going to disagree with that. I would say that I have a confidence based on conversations that we had that moving forward, it will take a different turn.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Isaacson, did you want to speak?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's good to see you again. On behalf of the property owner, the applicant, D.R. Horton, we respectfully request a continuance of items five, A, one through three on your agenda for annexation, rezoning, and the development agreement until council's meeting on June twenty-third. As you've heard, we've been working on these items for several months now, and we believe we're making progress. But there are a few key components that are still open items, and they're significant. For example, as you've heard, the town has engaged the firm of Hazen and Sawyer to do a study of the town's utility system. And we, I don't think that any of us being financially responsible, especially a home builder, would enter into an agreement such as this that's, that's got a long term to it without knowing more certainty about its financial responsibilities. It wouldn't be a good idea for the town to do that, and it wouldn't be a good idea for the property owner to do that. So that's an example of several of the open items that we have here. I would say that if any of you were buying your own home, you would not enter into a contract, or at least you would carefully review your financial responsibilities before you went to closing and agreed to go forward without knowing more. And so, you know, we're making some progress, but there are these open items with this study and some other items that we just need to know more. And we had a meeting last week that I think made some progress, and we learned more about the status of these items. And as we understand from the town staff, this information, hate to use the phrase raw data, but so be it, that that is being collected and, and will be reviewed and analyzed by the town's engineers, and then we will receive that, and we will have our engineers and staff review that. And then we need to come to an agreement on a reasonable allocation of the financial responsibilities for the improvements or changes to that utility system. That's one of several items in a lengthy and complicated agreement. But we think we're making progress, and we appreciate the town's cooperation and your indulgence with this process. You know, to answer some of your questions, I think I can assure you that as a property owner, we would like nothing more than to be out there building and occupy right now. The company is paying the care on this property, us on this property. You know, time equals in, in real estate and in real estate and in businesses. Like nothing more than to be, nothing more than to be engaged in construction and selling homes, and selling homes. But we want to get this, this is a long-term project, long-term, and it's complicated. Appreciate the town's cooperation, appreciate the town's cooperation in that regard. We wait receiving, anticipate receiving another information in a few weeks, hopefully by a few weeks, hopefully by, we've been by early June, have substantially all the, have substantially all the information needed in order to, our arms around the information, arms around the information in order to make some important decisions and decisions, and forward to continuing process. I'm glad to answer any question, I'm glad to answer that counsel may have.
You mentioned that there are certain, or items, or issues, or any of them to the magnitude of that study?
No, I think that's, I mentioned that one as the highlight. I think that is the largest item. That's right.
Any questions?
Well, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, counsel, before we discuss continuing, I'd like to open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak at this time. Seeing none, we will close that portion and return to counsel. Do we have a motion to continue?
We're breaking these up individually, or?
Yes, there'll be three separate public hearings and motions.
All right. Motion to continue the...
Before we go to the, we're still in discussion. Yeah, Tom has done a wonderful job, and I think that the fact that the town has gone through the trouble of making sure that we have somebody that represents us to his degree is awesome. I'm not encouraged to hear that there's things that continue to be a roadblock, or is a roadblock, like the fact that we are moving forward, and the builder has said that we're going to continue to move forward. But as well, the public who are out there, who are the neighbors, I think you did an excellent job a month or so back explaining why this process is taking so long. And I just think that the public needs to know that we are doing our side as much as possible, and making sure that we're amenable to the builder as what requires as far as the state goes. So not take lightly that we're just pushing forward and pushing forward and pushing forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Do you want to jump the gun? All right. So on the first, on number one, motion to continue the public hearing to the June twenty-third Town Council meeting at six P.M. in the Civic Center without further advisement, advertisement, rather?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anna, do you have anything to add for this next one? I'll just open the public hearing for the rezoning request. If anyone would like to speak on that? Seeing none, we will return to counsel. Any other discussion before we ask for a continue? Do you have a motion?
Let's see, motion to continue the public hearing for the rezoning request for June twenty-third, Town Council meeting at six P.M. in the Civic Center without further advertisement.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Anna, do you have anything to add for the consideration of the development agreement?
Any.
Okay. We'll open that public hearing to anyone who would like to speak concerning the development agreement. Seeing none, we'll return to counsel. Do I have a motion to continue this also?
I'll move to continue the public hearing for the development agreement to the June twenty-third Town Council meeting at six P.M. in the Civic Center without further advertisement.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Anna, do you have an overview of the land development amendment?
I do. Staff have prepared updates to Article Three of the Land Development Ordinance definitions. These changes are made to clarify how and to whom duties are assigned in the absence of a planning director. This is actually brought to our attention during a planning board meeting back in February. They said, what, what happens if there's not a planning director like there is right now? And so we said, that's a really good point, and let's fix it. So the definition has been amended to state, "Planning Director. The Town of Jamestown official charged with administering, interpreting, and enforcing the land development ordinance, including the sign regulations or their designee. In the event that the position of planning director is vacant, the town manager or their designee shall become the person responsible for administering the ordinances herein. Any reference to planning director shall be interchangeable with that of town manager." The planning board heard this amendment at their March fourteenth meeting and voted unanimously to approve it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Savannah?
Just Beth, I assume you've read them and are okay with the wording?
Yes, sir.
And is it in line with, and consistent with all the others that we've adopted as far as?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
As a matter of fact, planning director or his or her designee is referenced in other spots in the ordinance. It's just not in that definition.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Savannah, before we open the public hearing? This time, we'll open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak regarding the amendment to the Land Development Ordinance regarding the definition of the planning director. Seeing none, we'll close that and return to counsel. Any discussion further on this, counsel?
Well, you know, it's just a text amendment that clarifies the description, the definition. So certainly I would, would move to approve that amendment to the Land Development Ordinance regarding the definition of planning director.
Second?
This is a roll call vote?
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Councilmember Capes?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Avery?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for consistency?
Yes, I make a motion that the proposed amendment to Article Three definitions of the Town of Jamestown Land Development Ordinance to clarify how and to whom duties are assigned in the absence of a planning director be approved based on the following. The proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the adopted Envision Jamestown 2021 Comprehensive Plan of the Town of Jamestown because periodic texts are necessary, varying conditions, regulated based on changing conditions, laws, updates established with regulating bodies, announced with regulating bodies, that guiding document currently operational for current goals of the Envision Jamestown 21 Comprehensive 2021 Comprehensive, and the proposed zoning is reasonable because reasonable proposed amendment corrects any previous and adds clarifying and adds language and formatting to make the document to interpret and apply. And the proposed zoning text amendment, proposed zoning is in the public continuous improvement, continuous improvement documents promotes equitable application, applicable applications that promote safety and welfare of the safety and welfare of the Town of Jamestown.
Second?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you give, would you petition on the Partif grant application?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. The town would like to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, which is commonly referred to as Partif. The applicants must match the grant dollar for dollar, fifty percent of the total cost, the cost of the project. Local governments have three years to Partif, provide the Partif. Town staff met with the creation committee on March seven, creation committee on March seven twenty-two to discuss options, options, potential points that are associated with potential, potential project on the recent Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, Recreation Comprehensive Plan. The more points received, the more competitive the, the more competitive the app. Considering the points and caution, the each option, committee and staff recommend the opt, to apply for Partif, to apply for, to create a dog park, a play area, a natural play area, and to shelter the renovation of, the renovation of the park, and the reload and renovation of, and renovation of the volume. In addition to working with the Parks and Committee, Station Committee, staff of the community have presented to communities, presented to community groups, including Road, Town Business Association, Town Business Association, and held a community meeting on tenth twenty twenty-two, tenth twenty twenty-two, our community support. Staff is also expecting, staff is also expecting letters from other civic groups as well. The total, the total cost project is going to be around, is going to be around $10,000. Total town match of, total town match of, the total is $400,000, nine thousand fourteen, and it would be two hundred and four thousand, be two hundred and four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Without the five percent, without the five percent, which would be total town, total town match of fifteen thousand, two hundred and four dollars. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that we have going forward.
I only have one comment. I only have one comment. That's, I was at the meeting at the park last week, and, and I just, you Scott, and Anna, I go for the efforts as well, for the efforts, Jeff, you've done a really great job. And I don't think that, and I don't think that, you know, y'all, y'all day to day, but, it's your day to day, but it really is a thing that you do. I just wanted to say thank you, and I just wanted to say thank you for, for your efforts.
Appreciate that. Anna's been a huge, you said that, Anna's been a huge help.
How was that on the thirteenth?
Turned out, we were, we had twenty-five people and, and give, and, and, you know, we, to people that were playing, drafted people that were playing basketball and volleyball and, people that were actually out there using the park. We went and bribed them with a, bribed them with a popsicle.
That's good, yeah.
Frozen treats always, frozen treats always.
Yeah.
Quick, quick couple of, the, the playground area, the park for the kids and the park for the kids, will that be demolished? That be demolished? I knew something in the future to, all-inclusive, which I think, all-inclusive, which I think we're doing, an all-inclusive. But my question is, is, but my question is, is will the existing structure be torn or used until, and no longer used until it's completed at a later date? How will that, how will that actual playground area right?
No, sir. The, no, sir. The, stay right where it's at. This part of, part of, part of the project, it playground area?
Okay.
It would, area?
Okay.
It would move in the volleyball court in anticipation of the round, which would be playground, which would be, take up that whole area. We would also build a natural play behind the baseball field, yeah, over behind the baseball field parking lot. And once we got that, we could open that up, and then open that up, and the, all the playground, so playground, so we'd, lots of...
That brings up the, that brings up the last question I have, the natural, I know when I was growing up, that was a dead, I was growing up, that was a dead, the trees and stumps and that nature. Is that what, that nature, is that what bring in, or can you, natural playground area?
Um, some pictures in there, they look like, but it's a tunnel, log, but it's a tunnel. There's rocks that they're on, just on, just makes it look more environmental friendly and just, environmental friendly and just supposed to be there.
Man-made items.
They are man-made items.
They are man-made.
And it looks like you, so you got things and stepping stones, and stepping stones.
There's a log beam, it looks like a log beam, it looks like a log, things that, and it's, it's all connected together, and that would be a natural, so there, and that would be a natural surface.
I, I'm also, I'm all about this for the future of having the all-inclusive playground. I really love that idea, and I believe that idea, and I believe it's a grant you're looking October for this. looking October, uh, for this, for this playground.
Once we, Part of application, we'll just, Part of application, we'll, that one, um, that one's abilities grant, it's the abilities grant, November first, I believe, so we'll have to go, so we'll have to go, we finish this one, which is due May, then we'll jump right into that one.
That's awesome, yeah, that's awesome, yeah, great, I think you've done a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you to the park committee, uh, for working on that, uh, for working on that.
Yeah, they did a great job.
A lot of dots were stuck, a lot of dots were stuck that day.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if anyone has it, I would make a motion, I would support the Part of application.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, thank you, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Judy, do you have, Judy, do you have a motion on the preliminaries?
Mayor and council, Mayor and council, so we are calling this, um, present budget at this point, the prelim budget, it is very budget, it is very, that, that things will change between now and the recommended budget to be presented in May. So, at this point, we just kind of bullet points, that bullet points, that we'll explain a little bit, is presented in this, is presented in our budget. At this point, we are, at this point, we are doing, um, salary increases, a salary increases, a three point seven cent, which sent, which the, um, consumer tax of January, since January, is actually increased. This is in our, this is in our, now, we're recommending a raise of zero to three percent, of zero to three, and that's based on evaluations, points evaluations. Retirement, the state tells, the state tells us percentage of our time to pay in, so the contribution rate will increase to twelve and a half percent from the current rate of eleven point four percent, point four percent. 401K, we are recommending a five percent increase in the current rate, which would bring it to five percent, which is what a lot of cities and towns have as their rate, and we also thought that was, so we didn't do the full CPI, CPI index increase, we thought something we could put in, you know, something we could put in there to help with that. Health insurance, we're still, health insurance, we're still our renewal rates, uh, they did give us an estimate of a six to nine percent, but hopefully, we'll know before the next budget, before the next budget, and we'll adjust to that, to that. We are recommending new positions, be new positions placed, um, we would like to, we would like to add tech position, we would like to, we would like to second groundskeeper in the Recreation Department, Recreation Department. We previously had a couple of time spots, time spots, and it's been incredibly hard to fill those, so we would like to switch that over to a, one additional position. Public services, public services, you add an assistant services direct, public services director. Then we have, then we have a, who's retiring, and, and we to add a couple of positions to, a position to fulfill that duties, and this would be a, and this would be elections and billing man, as a full-time position, and a human, and a humanist position in the admin department. As far as rates, we're recommend, a water rate, a water rate increase of a three point one seven percent. We buy our water from the Piedmont Triad, Regional Triad, Regional Water mostly, they are doing in, they are doing in proposal of three and a half, but we're essentially passing, essentially passing most of that in, in our rate, in our rate. Sewer rate, we're recommending a seven point six, again, the city, again, the city of High Point, our sewer is proposing, I think, an eight percent increase, so we're just, just below that increase amount, that increase amount. We are, we are seeing an increase in the fee for garbage and re, fee for garbage, picking pickup of two dollars and, of two dollars and a per month. Property rates, property rates, this is a ration year, we have not gotten, we have not gotten our full rates from yet, so we will have some more information on that at the next meeting. Pardon me?
I sure got mine.
That, we were told that the, the delay in, in getting our full rates was in due part to the commercial, the commercial valuation, was later than the residential. Then we have, as part of our CIP plan, we have several, we have several places, not all of these are, um, all, um, party of those are, and just, I'll mention a few of these, mention a few of these. Fund, study, and study, and our study of, or future of the fire station, future of the fire station. Crosswalk improvements, water mapping project, storm water action, surfacing street project, surfacing street project, and street corridors, and, and land for the golf. Other items that we have in the budget, ba, bathrooms for the golf, something we had budgeted for this year, and that's, did not happen, did not happen with the different issues, supply chain, different issues, and rates and stuff, will get pushed into next year's budget. Sanitation truck, sanitation truck, we, the truck, early in the truck, early in the, we will not get it after July first, so it will be July first, so it will be in the new budget year, even though in the current year, so that, current year, included in the budget. Mowers at the golf, so mowers at the golf, driving range improvements, drainage improvement, farm drainage improvement, uh, snow plow, uh, some repaving, uh, some repaving paths at the golf course. Civic Center sound, town hall renov, town hall renov, library amendments, and baths, and bathroom park. In the water sewer, in the water, uh, some of the proj, some of the proj, improvements to EC, improvements to wastewater treatment plant, um, the town is a percentage owner in that plant, so whatever improvements, so whatever improvements High Point does, they come to us, it's along to us. Riverdale Pump Station there again, owner in that, so, so this is an expand, and those costs get, and those costs get past us as well. We will, we're projected to do some sewer lining in town, lining in town, uh, Main Street, and projects as well, line projects as well, a new service truck, steer, steer. As the budget stands at this, as I said, as I said, it will be changes before the budget in May. Created fund balance, we created fund balance, we are, um, project this budget, in this budget, nine hundred and, uh, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand in the general fund. Water sewer fund, water sewer fund, approximately four point nine million, four point nine million, in large part, huge payments, huge payments, um, Riverdale and East projects from, projects, city of High Point. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
I do have a couple of quick ones. On the rates, I'd just like the public to understand that Reese is at three point one seven, the seven point six, and the two dollars and fifty cents are pass-throughs.
That is correct.
That's not something that, um, the town is collecting, um, the town is collecting the bank, so is, some people tend to think that that's what we do with it, it is a pass-through of something that is costing us and the citizens, so I just want to make sure that that's understood for the public.
Yes, that is correct.
Any other items?
Well, um, I do have several things, um, on these, five new positions, five new positions, um, it seems like we should have a job descrip, duties and responsibilities for those jobs, and the salaries range, the low, medium, high range, before we can approve putting those new positions in.
We do, and, and that can be provided.
Okay. Then, of course, if, if you want to go through, I have several things to go through, when we, um, within the line items, on the professional services for legal fees, I just wonder if we have budgeted enough, because we've seen what has happened in, in the world we're living in these days, no offense to attorneys, but it seems like we need them more than we used to, uh, so I, I, and I don't know what we have spent this year to date, because I know we've had to several budget amendments, but, um, and, and of course, I appreciate staff, I know what you go through working on this budget, I know the other side of it, and I know how, how much work you put into it, but that was one of my thoughts on, on that part.
Martha, if you'd do me a favor, could you refer to the page that you're talking on, just so I can follow along, because I agree with that point.
The very first, page one of seventeen, right after the, what she just went over, uh, expenditure, budget report. The very first page from the detailed general fund.
The details, what I'm looking at.
And the very first line for governing body expenditures, the professional services, where we've got, or some attorneys, and, um, I just, I just see that that's, that's something we're, we're moving on, and, and something that I, I had asked, and Judy showed me what it was, here at the bottom of that page, you know, have, we used to have the library grant and historic grant, and the YMCA and the J Y L grants, they've moved that over to, what, recreation?
Recreation department.
Because, you know, we do it different now, it's a service that we contract with them for, so that's, you don't hold that hundred thousand dollars like we used to do, and, and I guess we'll figure that out whenever contracts come in for service, yeah.
But that will still be, a hundred thousand dollars will still be our budget for that?
We don't actually, we don't budget for that, we, we actually do it based on, on the service that they would provide.
Okay.
It is a contract, um, we, we did put some budget in here, but as we get in the contracts, that, um, you know, can change.
Thank you.
Then, on, I guess it's page five of seventeen, um, I was looking, uh, these other contracted services, which is line forty-nine ninety, um, this Main Street Corridor Study, which I know we've been talking about for several years, but I just wondered, with it being a tough budget year, if that should be moved out, um, maybe the bypass is supposed to be through, I have it in my report for later, October of twenty twenty-three, yeah, um, which I don't, that's the projected dates, okay?
Your guess is good.
I'm just saying, um, uh, so I, and I'm sure staff would like to probably keep it in there, but it's, I'm, I'm looking at ways that we might, should cut the budget where we need to do, but that's one thing, I just was asking that question.
Just under that same question, Alliance Code Enforcement's gone from thirty-five dollars an hour to forty-two dollars an hour, and they're asking for a forty-five thousand dollar contract, is, they give you a reason why they went up seven bucks per hour?
What, what I think is that when they started the service, they were kind of giving us a break on the fees, and that this is, now that we've been with them for a while, just a natural kind of increase.
So, they're saying that thirty-five dollars an hour is a break? Just a question.
I think I remember, I think I remember Dave saying that, on that trial period, that they were giving us maybe a, a little better rate.
That sounds familiar.
I'll talk about Alliance later.
You what?
I'll talk about Alliance later.
Okay, okay. And then, there are several things I think that are intertwined, um, in order to approve these things, I think the additional staffing, and then the town hall renovations, and the Civic Center renovations, and Civic Center Sound are sort of all intertwined, um, and I think it's hard to approve those until we come to resolution that all these things are needed, um, therefore, the job descriptions would help decide if those positions are, you know, needed, uh, and then you could talk about where you're gonna put them, um, and of course, it's, it's well-known that I'm, I'm not a fan of this being the council chambers forever and ever, amen.
No.
But, um, uh, if, if I am the minority, and the majority of the council thinks that should happen, then that's the way it goes, that's why we have five people here, but I do believe, um, um, we need to talk about then by giving up this space, taking this space away from civic groups and our citizens, what we're going to give back to them, and that comes back to the clubhouse, um, and if it comes back to that, I think we need to look at those rates for the civic groups, and, um, and give them a better rate than what, what, what they're charging now, I'll, I'll have to look back at it, but it's seventy-five dollars an hour, or something like that. And then also, I definitely don't think, even if we give this up, and it not be a multipurpose room, only a civic, only for the council chambers, I don't think we should do away with the elections. Jamestown has a good reputation of working with our local units of government, and being good partners with them, we do a lot of services with Guilford County that they help us with, and I don't think that we should do away with allowing our elections to be here, I think it's a disservice to our citizens. We've seen when we stand out here all day that day, how many elderly we have, how many curbside votes we have, and it's easy and convenient for them, um, I don't, and, you know, like I said, the primary is in May, when our council meeting, and I don't even know where we're gonna vote. I, I called the elections board, and they said it would be here, but then I find it is not, so I don't, I don't even know where we're gonna vote for the primary. So, I think these are some things that need to be nailed down, that this is what the majority of the council wants, that, that's not, as, those are questions you can't answer, but I'm saying that there are parts of the budget that I think go together that have to be established before we can approve those pieces.
I'd like to echo, uh, what you're saying, Martha, especially with this particular facility here, where we're sitting, um, in moving those other civic groups out to the golf course, one of the things you mentioned right off the bat was handicap accessibility and those sort of things, the elderly and how it was, a lot of curbside stuff going on, but we're going to say, all right, well, now you've got to go out to the golf course and go from a parking lot that's quite a distance away, up a hill to the, the, uh, club itself, so I, do anyway with this as a multi, I'm not in favor of whatsoever.
That will help in determining that those, that those are all necess, and, and if that then is, and if that then is the case, then, and then, then put them, and then, then it's that conversation as to where that will be, as to where that will be. I just, uh, uh, especially on the elect, I feel like we will be doing a dis, I feel like we will be doing a dis, so we don't, um, and, and continue our partnership with our, our sister cities and with, uh, and the county, uh, to continue to, to do that.
I don't think you can say that out enough.
We've had a good reputation of, of working with them, um, and then, then that would bring into play if, um, if the majority of the council, uh, decides that that's, that's what is best for us, then I, I'd like to have that conversation of revisiting the, the rates, uh, at the clubhouse, if, if that's what is gonna be the option for our civic groups and our Jamestown nonprofits.
I think that's really reasonable, but I, I just want to, you know, if we look at the, the cadence of what's gonna happen when the order of operations, we have to be realistic about that, there are certain aspects of this we can unpack now, and there are other aspects of this that aren't gonna come until later on, so if we're not careful, we let everything get held back because of one point, and I think what we have to do is objectively look at the multiple things that are happening, there's the people aspect, there's the building aspect, there's the community accessibility aspect, and trying to make sure that we're giving, you know, a reasonable consideration to all, and also looking at the downstream effects of how it's gonna impact, not only the community, but the people that work within, you know, our town.
Well, of course, I, I am very supportive of staff, uh, I've always, that, that they had all the tools, the equipment, the training, um, whatever they needed to help them with their jobs and do their jobs effectively, and I, I, I don't want it to be, you know, I'm told that staff, they need more people, that they're burnt out, they can't do anymore. Well, I don't want people working like that, that, that you're, you're gonna have a nervous breakdown, you know, um, I want it to still be a great place to work, yes, it's always gonna be a walk in the park, but obviously, you don't want staff to feel that way, um, so, again, we go back to if we have these job descriptions, maybe we can determine, and then that makes the other elements come into play, where are you gonna put them, and then, okay, what are you gonna do when you're giving up this to your citizens, and, and then another discussion about rates at the clubhouse.
Do you think it's.
To John's point, yeah, he, he's mentioned, everybody look at Jeff objectively. I, I don't think that anything's been said by anybody present so far is not objectively looking at all the different aspects and putting out, you know, things that we've talked to, talked to people in the public and what their concerns are because we get the phone calls as well. But I'm, I definitely, you know, I, I don't want it to seem like we are, when it comes to positions, that we're padding the top and the folks that are out on the street doing the job. We only added one position there and want to say on the job. I mean, the ones digging ditches and things of that nature. We talk about having trouble of filling those positions, then, you know, maybe pad that a little more so versus an assistant of an assistant or that sort of thing. But I'm with Martha on, we need, we need input on what those positions are going to be and, and why, what the study, the impact study, maybe do a study as far as inside study as far as the folks that are out there on the street. But I'm with Martha. And again, to John's point, objectively, we don't need a space this big just for council meeting. It'd be a waste of space. So.
I, I think, you know, from, from where I sit, part of the, the issue has been, I feel like we've seen a lot of individual pieces and not as much the big picture. And so, the big picture, and so, you know, I know that, that, you know, there is, you know, there is expansion at the firehouse, a new building or creating a new building or, or adding, and then some community space within it, space within it, you know, that's down the road. Need to be looking at, okay, what need to be looking at, okay, what's, what's solution because concern about civic groups and I feel like, about civic groups and I feel, you know, that, that number one, we, you know, I, I can't, we, you know, I could, we have eyes here and only use this in one reason if we don't know exactly what we're going to offer, you know, other folks who've been using, folks who've been, who are really part of the fabric of the community, frankly, put on events that people, frankly, put on events that people. James, and we do help with, but you know, largely help with, but you know, it, it's free and each Christmas and each Christmas groups and things like that. So, you know, I really would like to, so, you know, I really would like to have it really looked at, you know, one, two, three, so, you know, one, two, three, so it's imperative that we be very flexible in this room, flexible in the, certainly because we don't, we don't have any other, because we don't, we don't have an option, you know, maybe years from now, a few years from now, it's expanded and there is huge community space there used, you know, for voting, you know, for voting, meaningful to saying, oh, we can, we can put some things down, we can, we can put some things down here.
Yeah.
Just really, you know, I agree and really, you know, I agree and I have to stand here during all this when none of it is, all this when none of it is typically money related, but it's just pieces that have to piece, pieces that other in order to figure it out.
They answered before, answered before, and for your benefit too, what's going to actually be, on what's going to actually be in here. And, and if, if we need to have, if we need to have a special on that, council, council, our right.
I don't think that's a bad idea. I don't think that's a bad idea.
You're what you think, and, and then, and then we've got to come to some, at least the majority of the council agreement, have the council agreement, so we can tell staff and they can figure out how, and they can figure out how these numbers may be different.
I think discussions about it, further discussions about it. As far as objectivity, I would, anybody who's not in it, anybody who's not being at this point in time, but just encouraging.
No, you were talking about it. I'm, I'm messing with you.
But I, again, I just, but I, again, I like it's important if we throw this stuff out on the table, throw this stuff out on the table, let's look at it as if we don't, you know, we, we can all say that we have this thing or this thing that, that we hang our hats on. That makes sense. I just want to make sure that we, we look at everything equally.
Yeah.
We look at everything, so.
Back with the posi, and back with the positions though, I was looking for my organizational chart, it looks like we still have the two sanitation positions that are vacant. We haven't been able to fill, you know?
Was that the two?
No, for the full time. We have, we have been using Bradley temps to fill those positions. We, we, and I don't, I don't know if it's finalized now, but we were interviewing one of those to, to be hired as an employee. So.
Of course, we, one of the, you know, I know.
To fill those with.
Because that was one of the first things, we talked about it, when there is the development, that's what we're going to need, that's what we're going to need, more employees for the public services crew.
Yeah, those are showing vacant on the chart.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you look like you had a thought over there. I saw a microphone heading your way.
We actually have two camps on the back of the truck at this time.
One's been there about ten, twelve weeks, the other one started today.
Gotcha. I think I waved to them this morning.
Then also, I was wanting a little more, I guess, clarification on how the, the trash pickup with the retrofits to the existing garbage trucks with tippers. And, and at the retreat, so this would change then to garbage pickup being once a week, and of course, once a week. And, and those toters would be bigger than the recycling toters. And thought about that, thought about that was about the senior citizens. But then I remember the guy from Smith Garner, he said that they have had, where a senior citizen can make an application to the town to have the staff get their, their toters for them, which that would be great, if they would allow that. And then also, back to what we had before the recycling on Riverwalk and, and Quarter Path on, on where they can, on where they can, their toters. There, then the conversation said that there could be a discussion with the homeowners association, but what, what would the discussion be with the homeowners association?
Isn't that canned kind of far down the field at this point?
Yeah.
Huh?
I don't.
Huh?
I'm white there yet. Okay. So you're just going to retrofit the trucks with, but continue to do our regular garbage pickup next fiscal year?
I could go on for an hour about questions about how that's actually going to work and how we're going to get it.
But is that, is that, am I understanding that right, Paul or Matt?
Do you want to answer it?
Judy, you get to stay there another ten minutes.
Yes, we, we could retrofit the existing trucks with tippers. Two of the three are already plumbed for the tippers. And the one that's coming in a year late is also plumbed for tippers.
So I guess my, my commentary here would be that we're presenting this preliminary budget to you. It is our responsibility as a town to plan in ahead, plan ahead and plan in advance. You know, all of this won't happen overnight and we can't make that decision easily in next fiscal year, just if we feel like doing something different. So we are trying to plan ahead and we will get more information to you on the exact, you know, how this will work and those types of things. We're still working on those details.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was trying to determine, if you're going ahead and, and retrofitting the garbage trucks, but then are you still just going to pick up the plastic bags? And this is just anticipation of in the next year doing the toters?
Paul and his staff and I will be working on that starting this week, trying to get some details on that.
Okay.
We will have briefings with you on that to make sure that it's very clear.
Okay.
Thanks.
So is it physically possible to pick up the entire town with toters on one day?
Not with one truck. We, we don't feel like we can with one truck in one day.
So we'd have to have two trucks going on one day, or how would that?
Or we would split, I mean, those are details that we need to put a plan together and present it to you.
Right. And I, Matt, have you gotten anywhere on that request when we had you and I and the others had the meeting last week, whenever it was, when I asked for something that would kind of draw out and say how that would be physically done as far as?
Right, that's what I was just referring to, is that we will, Paul and his staff and I are going to start that work here this, this week.
But point being is that there's no way, can two trucks get the whole town in one day?
No, the, the study that we had done exhibited that. We can't do, we possibly, in our current setup, our current population, current number of customers, to do, if we put tippers on the back of the truck, it'd probably take two trucks, two crews, and we felt like that is not cost effective. We're trying to give you the best service for the most reasonable price. So we feel like what we're proposing, which would be to put tippers on the truck, bring recycling in-house, and to split the town into some sort of route that would, a portion of it would be picked up on one day, a portion of the town would be picked up on another day. And that will change too, because we're going, our population will change and our routes will change. So we'll have to make adjustments to that as we go. So whatever information I'm going to give you will be very draft, very preliminary, and it's not going to be set in stone, so.
So you'd have to do the same thing though for recycling, one portion of the town on one day and another portion on another day?
Most likely. We have, again, we haven't gotten into all the, the operational nitty gritty details.
Well, right, but you know, we've, we've got a vote on spending money, so it's, it's something I like to have ahead of time, but that'd be four days for just recycling and household trash pickup. What about bulk goods and limbs and trees and things of that nature? How would that work?
Again, we're working on those details. I'd like to schedule a briefing with all of you to cover that when we get that information. I don't, not prepared to talk about it this evening, thank you.
I know we had, of course, maybe we, I'm going through line items, maybe we need to just go to the C I P, but I know we, we put in here to repave the cart path, and then I saw that there's also moved out for the next year, I think, being at the golf shop, including the drive shop, including the, and I just wanted to, the same time, better deal, the better deal.
Didn't they talk about already pushing the golf, about already pushing the golf paths?
Well, that's what, then they said no, then they said no. It's in fiscal year, fiscal year.
As far as the paving the golf, we ask, we, twenty-five thousand dollars in current budget, current budget, not doing, we're pushing that next year, next year, and then making that dollars for next year, dollars for next year.
For the twenty-two.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Then that's what I was just wondering, there's, there's also a line, C I P for doing, C I P for doing paving at the shop. And I just wonder, shop, and I just wondered if they had a better deal if you did them It was paving, including driveway, including driveway and plot, and schedule for the twenty-three twenty, for the twenty-three tw- also usually when you group things together, if they're close together, you can get a better deal, but, you know.
The, the far out in years is more preliminary, even more preliminary. So we're, we're basically, you know, in this budget, we're, in this budget, next fiscal year, next fiscal year.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, have that one done, you know, have that one done into twenty-three, both of them together. When you price it out. Talking about the Penny Road water line replacement, and a little bit of information, a little bit of information from Greg today, and I shared it with Matt and, and Paul, but it, it was an email and it was a bit hard to understu, understand what he was trying to get at. And I did try to call him and left a, a voicemail, but it sounded like City of High Point is online to do the pedestrian bridge there at Penny Road, but they do not have funding for the sidewalks. So I had asked Paul and Matt if we should wait on Penny Road on our water line replacement and sidewalk until High Point, you know, is getting ready to do theirs. Yeah, I was just thinking about workload too for the staff. Of course, East Fork Road and East Main should be done, but we know we've got to do Oakdale Phase Two and Three, and if you're going to do then the Main Street water line and then do Penny Road, are we setting staff up again then to be having too much going on? If there's something that could be pushed out that's not going to cause any problems. But if I get more information from Penny Road, from High Point, I certainly will let you know.
Well, it sounds logical.
Those were my highlighted points, and I really did scale it down, believe it or
Any other specific issues that anyone wanted to bring up at this time?
I'd like to echo what Martha said. I think we do need to do a session, if it's called or whatever, where we can talk about not only that.
Like a work session for us.
Exactly.
Agreed.
Well, yeah.
Should we go ahead and make a motion and set that, or?
We set up a special.
In fairness to the town, why don't we let the?
Staff?
Staff decide when they, they can put it together as opposed to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll speak about it and contact you guys and make sure it works with your schedules if that's okay.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Are we ready for Judy to move on to the next item?
I want to make her stand up there another ten minutes.
You know, sitting is bad for stuff.
I'm just saying, yeah.
The public hearing date for the recommended budget.
Okay.
The next item.
We'd like to request.
I was going to ask her about the rate schedule in the preliminary, and, or I can get with you after that. I was just looking at the rates we just approved last month for the golf course, the golf course rights we approved, and, and I don't see some of them on this rate schedule, but I can show you that.
We'll, we'll double.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be glad to show you that. I'll just double check those.
Okay.
We would like to request to set a public hearing date for the recommended budget and C I P for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and that would be for the next council meeting, which is May seventeenth.
Martha, you want to roll and make a motion?
Oh, okay, if you want me to. I would make a motion to set the public hearing for the recommended budget and the C I P for fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, for the May seventeenth Town Council meeting at six P M in the Civic Center at the town hall.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And Judy, you're still standing up there.
Okay, we would like to request to set a date for public input on the American Rescue Plan funding as well as our capital improvement projects that, that might be out there or other, or other things that citizens might want to bring up. We'd like to set that for May the third from four to six here in the Civic Center.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to set the date for a public input session for the A R P and capital improvement program projects for May the third from four to six in the Civic Center at the town hall.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Good job, Judy.
Good evening, how are you? I am coming to you this evening to bring a budget amendment and a, this is a dual-purpose request, it's a budget amendment, budget amendment number seventeen, and a consideration of a contract award for construction of the park maintenance facility that we've been talking about a little bit earlier. As you recall, this particular maintenance facility was a primary goal that was outlined in Council's strategic plan, it's goal number five point seven, to complete plans and construction of a new facility for parks maintenance. The budget amendment would increase the capital project budget as needed to be able to enter into the contract for construction of the recreational maintenance facility. As you recall, we had a bid opening in February, the low bid came from Dream Built Construction Incorporated. It did come in quite a bit higher than we expected, about seventy percent higher, which was about four hundred fifty thousand dollars over budget. The majority of the additional funding does come from the general fund appropriative fund balance, but a small amount would come from the general capital reserve fund, which those expenditures, expenditures have been designated to be spent on the golf course, so this, this project does qualify for that. The town's been working with the low bidder in the last sixty-plus days to see if we can't figure out a way to reduce the project costs. The final cost that he was able to get back with his suppliers and vendors, it did increase approximately thirty thousand two hundred dollars from the original base bid amount, which was nine hundred which was nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, to a new base bid of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred. That does exclude one alternate bid that we requested, which was for HVAC unit to be placed in the shop area to help with worker comfort. I do have Jamie Claybrook here, our golf maintenance superintendent, and he can talk to you a little bit about the conditions that we have out there, I know that you've experienced and you've seen it, and I know that we've been dealing with this for several years, we've been working on trying to get this project off the ground, and I understand that that is quite a bit more than we expected to pay, but we are still going to recommend that we move forward with this project. I'd like to answer any questions you might have now, or if, if you have questions for Jamie about the conditions, I'd be glad to have him come up as well.
Yeah, I'd love to hear it, Jamie.
Okay.
I, I haven't been out there since, we were just talking, probably four years ago, when we first said, oh, this is awful, and I know it's got, got me.
It hasn't gotten better.
Thank you.
Just a quick figure cost, what, at a million dollars, or nine hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred, a million dollars? What is that per square foot?
Uh, it's a little over four thousand square feet, Paul, you have, Paul's my human calculator. He's much better at that than the, than I am.
After this, Matt, we'll ask you some long-term questions.
Two ninety, five, six.
Two twenty-six?
Two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six a square for a metal building?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jamie.
Hey, don't you?
Good evening, good to see you all. Um, well, the, you know, the conditions of the maintenance building, it's more of a safety than anything.
Yeah.
Um, we have golf balls constantly, just pounding the golf maintenance building. Probably have thirty-five thousand golfers' rounds a year, probably thirty thousand of them hit a golf ball over there. But, uh, equipment, we have several pieces of equipment that will not go into the shop so we can perform maintenance on them. The bathroom is in really rough condition. You can, it feels like you're on a boat when you're actually in the bathroom, you can see through the cracks. It's very congested, the doors are small, it feels like you've got to turn sideways to get into the main door that we enter every day and every morning. And we have, like, there's no gutters on the building, so when it rains, it just falls down, goes into the shop. Insulation that's up on the ceilings is falling down, who knows what's in that, but it constantly falls down, and the grinding, when we grind real, reduces a lot of me, reduces a lot of me, metal dust, and a lot of noise, and he does that constantly, the mechanic, Justin King, and he's, he's wearing a mask for that all day long, and we go through there, we breathe that stuff in, and the noise, again, is pretty loud, that's why we have grinding rooms, this new building would have a grinding room, and it would have ventilation, so he wouldn't have to wear a mask all day. I mean, you can see his red, where he has that mask on, that respirator, that's what he wears. And, let's see, um. The meeting area is, is congested too, the whole shop's just really congested. It's hard to move around there when you have a meeting or at lunch, it's a lot of shuffling, there's a lot of people moving back, so one guy can go in the way, but that's not the biggest problem, but it's just, um, and the, you know, no wash pad, we don't really have a wash pad, we wash our equipment by the maintenance building and the grass on the asphalt. Can't do it at the shops, where it creates more time for the workers, and as the man said earlier, time equals money. And is there any questions that I can ask or answer?
I got a couple, um, best guess, because I don't remember, how old is this structure, roughly?
It was built in seventeen fifty-two.
I totally believe, I, I distinctly saw some.
I'm assuming nineteen seventy-four.
Sounds about right, and as far as, it's been a while since I've been out there to actually look, but other than the bathroom, I seem to recall there's some other areas that were rotted out.
Yes, we have, like, eaves, they're, they're rotting.
Yeah.
There's no security, there's no security, I mean.
Well, that's true, and I, I wonder about any mold.
That's an issue.
If your insulation gets wet, uh, does that create mold?
Yes, it does.
Well, obviously, this is just way more than we had anticipated when we first started talking about it, and it would be so wonderful, we could go back in time and, and have done it when we were wanting to do it, but you can't go back, you got to go forward. But that's, that, John and I were talking before the meeting, that's my main thing, is the safety of, of a clean place, and safe place, a secure place for, for the employees, you know, you, you got to come to work, you least want it to be, uh, you know, as pleasant experience as possible, and, um, even though, I mean, it just, I, I really, this price just blows me away, but I, I think about the, the employees, and, and we have a responsibility to them as well.
It really does come down to the people, I got to be in full agreement with you on that, I mean, if folks are going to work in this environment, and we've got things rotting off, and I've seen it, it's been a while, but, I mean, it looked good then, so.
And like I said, there's, there's no fluff to take away, to try to get the price down, because it's, it's pretty bare bones what it is, it's just exactly, you know, what you need, um, it doesn't have a lot of things that we could cut out, other than, like I said, the A.C., which I, I hate that, um, because it's going to get hot in a metal building. I've been in a trailer before, when there's no air and it's out there, one, under any trees, and it's like an oven.
Much like we talked about before, the other issue, really, you know, getting stuff done, you know, getting stuff done, this was a situation that kicked too far, and kicked too far, and circle, and that cost come, but, you know, but, you know, I can hope for a lot of things, and so.
Well, that's, well, that's where I am, because there's certainly no to be replaced, it's embarrassed to be replaced, it's embarrassing to work there, you know, for, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not for people to work in, but, you know, at the same time, but, you know, with the same, the price went up so quick, and, you know, will, and, you know, will, there was a way to title next year and rebid, would next year and rebid would stabilize a little more, can't know, we don't, we don't know, which we can't know, we don't, we don't, I mean, estimation, do you think there is any space that, space that any, I know that when, you know, you're talking heavy industrial stuff, there's nowhere, heavy industrial stuff, there's nowhere, but, you know, is there any, um, you know, like the, you know, like the concept of soccer fields is on a higher, on a higher, is there any other space that could be utilized, could be utilized of other people for, you know, to, just to, you know, to, just to road a little bit, to see if there's a lower, or, or, or to the point where?
Yeah, are you offices, offices?
Any, well, you mentioned meetings, um, I know you're, um, I know you're, are there other offices?
There's just the one office.
Okay.
Just the one office.
Okay, so just, um, the office, the meeting space, you know, I'm just wondering, is there, you know, I'm just wondering, is there way, get safer, get safer until?
Is there grinding stuff, is there grinding at the, or the trucks part?
Where the truck?
Are you sewer system, or all the garbage, sewer system, or all the garbage, all the things down over?
Garbage, those, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think feasible, because of the, you keep the, because of the, you keep there, transport the reels and those things, or the reels and those things heavy, and he's doing it single day, every single day, every single day, just keeping them short.
Hearing that we have some, hearing that we have some violations, has Alliance been out, sent us a letter, sent us a, we need to do things differently?
Not that, not that I'm aware.
I mean, have we with any kind of violation, tag with any kind of violations, other organizations state that it's un?
Not that I'm, not that, but since I've been, I haven't seen anybody, I haven't seen anybody.
We've all been in, in that building, right?
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's been, yeah, like I said, it's, it's been a ghost, I'm, that was better, not like any better, I don't have a crystal ball to know if next year, no, if next year, this is going to be cheaper, like, it's going to be cheaper.
Yeah, it seems going.
Uh, yeah.
Or expensive.
Uh, yeah, I was sitting here saying, oh, gosh, why didn't you, or do it last year, or, uh, there's just no way of knowing them, but I, I, I think the, I, I think these deserve to have a safe, I, I struggle with it, but I, I struggle with the price, but I wouldn't want to work in that, I wouldn't want to work in.
I agree.
Every day.
They're saying it's not a safe place, they're saying it's not a safe place, so then they shouldn't go to work in the morning.
Well, I mean, we've been, obviously, but, obviously, but, the golf ball, they're pounding us, um, they, um, they can inside the shop, we make it as safe as we possibly can. And we are, and we side of the shop a lot, I mean, we don't have the shop a lot, not at the shop a lot, but, um, it's working on pieces, working on pieces, like I mentioned, five pieces of equipment, that, five pieces of equipment that we need the shop to work, to work on, Justin, Justin aside, pieces of equipment, and one of them's, pieces of equipment, and one of them's, is a, and two fairway mowers, we work on those a lot, we work on those a lot, and he has to change those a lot, needs a lot, change oil a lot, and he, we got a list purchase that we can't, because we can't get, because we can't, pieces of.
In the construction field, you, I'm in the construction field, you don't have to sell me on anything that, that's needed for it, and my, my holdback is a million dollars at two hundred and twenty-six dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
When that's, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what we thought, based on all the professional people that we had involved in putting together the, uh, the bid package that it was going to come in at, so we, we dropped the ball seriously in there somewhere in, in our estimations, um, and that's my holdback, spending a million dollars on something that next year we'd probably do it for six hundred thousand.
But we don't know that.
We don't know that, true.
There are no economic indicators.
It'd be two million next year.
That we can see right now that would suggest that it would be, any prices lower next year.
Yeah.
And that's just looking at the big picture, not each individual industry.
Well, I was just talking to him, I was just talking to him financially, uh, this morning, and of course, this, this morning, and of course, year, the calendar year, they're going, so it's going to be awful, it's going to be awful. Of course, we go on the year, so I, you know, fiscal year, so I, you know, for December, January, it's all of a sudden going to start getting, things all of a sudden going to start getting better, I'm not optimistic.
Well, seeing, well, seeing lumber in the way that, in, in December, in, in December, she'd apply wood that I need from Jack for thirty-five dollars a sheet, it's thirty-five dollars a sheet, sixty-one dollars a sheet right now, the exact same plywood, so prices go same plywood, so price come down and go up and come down, but, I, I don't have to be sold on, and I don't have to be sold on, it's knowing that we're going to pull from the taxpayers, we're going to pull from the taxpayers' back pocket for four hundred and fifty thousand, extra four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a million dollars into, that's where I have, that's where I have.
Well, and that's, I guess, I always ask Judy about, I just ask Judy, general fund balance, if we do this, if we do this, a lot from that, how it affect us, affect us, obviously, but I mean, is it something we can, but I mean, is it something, being worried, again, the fund balance get too low, staff has done a good job of, staff has done a good job of building that many years ago, in trouble, and, and staff is in trouble, and, and staff has done a great, methodically, add up, and this is going to, and this is going to, a big old swipe.
And the reason we have that fund balance, that fund balance, is to maintain our assets, our assets, this is not operating, we're talking about, this, talking about, this is an asset to be purchased and used for the future, and used for the future.
I think we're going to do the X, uh, HVAC, the X, uh, estimate at thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I, yeah, I mean, I not want to, it's out, um, just to get the cost down, to get the cost down, something that we really need to have, so.
Well, you're, what's that most retrofit, when, while they're building it, while they're building it?
To be clear, the alternate bidder was forty-two, bidder was forty-two for the HVAC.
It's just hard on up to actually see a savings, I'm up to actually see a saving, I think that's where we're all struggling, but other key words, the other key words that were used that, you know, would weigh, and we've let things play out, we don't know what it's going, we don't know what like a year from now, and I don't know that it's going to get better, and I don't know that it's going to get better, we've got people working there.
And, and I do want to clarify, not to, I want to clarify, not, if you don't, I'll, I'll jump up. I feel bad, talking to Phil, bad, seated position.
I think we should stand as long, you just stand as long, I think it's only fair.
Any more questions for Jamie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
Be hard hat, hard hat.
Yeah, the alternate bid on HVAC system, cool the workings, cool the workings to eighty degrees, um, there are, there are, eighteen foot, is that fourteen foot? Fourteen foot, fourteen footers, those doors stay open a lot, our recommendation, our recommendation, not trying to take anything away from staff, but, from the staff, but forty-two thousand is a bit of, a bit of, a bit of, um, add that, add that point, we could all input the HVAC in to cool that, in to cool that space, um, I'll leave it.
Cool the bay areas?
I'll leave it.
Cool the bay area?
Correct. So.
So are the, so are the oil?
Yes, the off, and the, you know, break, and the, you know, the, the restrooms would be heated space.
Okay.
The conditioned space.
Okay.
The condition separate.
And the grinding have its own ventilation, will have its own ventilation?
They have their own special ventilation, the stuff that they're doing, that's because of the stuff that they're doing, that's correct.
Before, you could just put some gigantic ceiling, in the ceiling.
We did talk about that. Any other questions for us?
If you, if you, if you, if saw the HVAC system laid, already be, would it already be clearly wired?
We would have an HVAC, an HVAC there to do that, we would set it up, we would set it up.
Construction.
So that we could have, going forward, going forward. We could certainly, we could certainly, part of this project, I have a very small number, and, 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 and scheme of things, a million dollars is a lot of money, um, you know, I'm trying to be just as I can with the town's money, as I can with the town's money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Additional discussion? Do I have a motion, do I have a motion to, this, um, this, um?
I'll make the motion to approve a ward of the con, a ward of the lowest responsive register.
I can first do the budget, I can first do the budget.
Sorry. I get ahead of myself. The budget amendment?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll be down on the bound, I'll just down on the bound.
To that motion, I think the employees, the lawyers, deserve.
Agreed.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Thank you. Now, do you want additional motion? Additional motion?
Forgot what I, uh, let's see, uh, let's see, uh, approve the Ward Act, the Lowest Respond Act, the Lowest Responsive Bid or Dream Built Construction, the amount of nine hundred ninety, the amount of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand?
Make a second, make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Matthew, you're back, Matthew, you're back, your report, please.
Thank you very much, um, I know that Jamie and his staff, I know that Jamie and his staff appreciate that, we've got a lot of work to do, so we're going to work on that, so, we're going to work on that. April twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth, uh, having Bicycle, Bicycle, Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Committee, we'll be hosting an open house here, an open house from five to seven P.M., uh, this will be a drop-in, this will be a drop, and the Civic Center, have the planners that have, planners that have aimed to help us with that, first, they'll all be on site, feedback from citizens, and feedback from citizens for our bike and pedestrian.
April twenty-fifth? April twenty-fifth?
April, five to.
Cool, thank you.
In this room.
Cool, thank you.
In this room, so we would invite anybody who's interested to come, anybody who's interested to come, some information on that, and I was preparing, some, preparing, some things that, for everybody to drop in and walk around, and everybody to drop in and walk around and look. As you know, as you know, about it at length, the Town Council, working for the annual, after working for the annual budget, um, will be meeting on day, May the third, Tuesday, May the third, from four to six here in the Civic Center, here in the Civic Center, your input from citizens, really, our cap, our capital and needs, the use of our federal, use of our federal, A.
Farm.
P.R., A.R.P., P.R., A.R.P., A.R.P., American Funds, uh, that's wrong. I am, I am to announce that there are twelve community that have been named as final twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-two Departmentation Moby Award, uh, which recognizes states, uh, which recognizes states' beds that combine sets of transportation, transportation, several members of the staff, first of the Town Council, we're going to be traveling, Town Council, we're going to be trolley on May the fourth, receive recognition for this, receive recognition for this achievement, and I want to take a moment, recognize Paul, recognize Paul, he's done a tremendous. to take a moment, recognize Paul, uh, recognize Paul, has done a tremendous amount of project, um, project. Uh, he has gone above and beyond. And also Anna, and also Anna for helping to submit this application to, for the award, so, uh, for the award. So, um, and our fingers crossed that we'll get, uh, one of those awards, get, uh, one of those awards.
That would be nice.
Music in the Park, Music in the Park, off on Friday, May the 6th, we're featuring Dev, we're featuring Roadhouse. They're a unique eclectic, a unique eclectic, a little bit of, uh, different things, Brothers and Grateful Dead, Brothers and Grateful Dead.
Wow.
Couple other little things, we've had them here, welcome them, welcome those, welcome them, welcome those, got, music, we conclude around them. Onation on all of those music events has been, music events has been booked page. As I said earlier, this reflects, I said earlier, this reflects 3.1 and our council strategic plan, strategic plan. Help further, uh, events in the park, events in the park. Here, we have a really cool, various genres of music, various genres, and to spread our wings a little bit. We have some top 40, we have some top 40, we always have good top 40 hit. We have some, um, we have some Beachons, uh, we have a, a specific band, so a child of the 80s, like, a child of the 80s, like me, with that. Uh, we also, a band is coming, um, band is coming, uh, food and beverage vendors that are on, on our events, on our events on Facebook. On behalf of the, on behalf, I'd like to extend our appreciation, Town Veterans Committee for the James Town Veterans Committee for preparing the Veterans Memorial in Town Park, in James Town Park, in recognition of Vietnam War Vet Day, which was held on, uh, Day, which was held on March, uh, we do thank for their service. And fin, and finally, uh, as you know, the town purchases from Piedmont Tribe, water from Piedmont Tribe Authority, and they really changed their disinfecting, they changed their disin, methodology from chloramines, over, it's called chloramines, chlorine, chloramine disinfection, chloramine disinfection and fur method, but it is a weaker disin, it is a weaker disinfection. Once in a while, we have to do a burrow where, like, where we back through the system, where they put chlorine system, uh, through the system, uh, for about, in, in order for that there is not, uh, bacteria residual, bacteria residual in there. So they are in the process of changing that over, changing that over. Um, there was a little bit of a delay, chloramines, uh, pro, chloramines, uh, procient, that is starting to, so we should see that, so we should see that, uh, start for our area days, couple days. Anything else? If you have any questions, happy to answer them, happy to answer them.
Question, and I don't know if it's up to the council, but it's up to the council. I really enjoyed when we had managers report, it's easier to keep up with, and it's easier to keep up with, uh, to make the notes and have dates and time things. Just wonder if we could sort of things, just want to act to that.
You would like to have in the packet?
Like.
In the packet?
Like.
Glad to.
Just in our.
Yeah, like, like we, yeah, like, like we.
Apologies, I didn't realize, make sure that we get.
Well, it worked, really, was able to make the, kind of keep up with whatever date, trying to keep up with whatever date and time, and then thinking, well, what did you?
Makes perfect sense, will make, makes perfect sense, we'll make sure that happens. Anything else? Thank you very much.
I wear my, um, the night of the 80s, count, the night of the 80s.
I look forward to.
I can't grow the hair back, I can't grow the hair back.
Extra swatch, watch. Legging, leggings.
Probably do.
Yeah.
Flash deads, see flash deads.
Yeah.
It's probably going a far, but.
Thank you.
Too far, but.
Thank you.
What I can do.
The committee reports, committee reports?
Yeah, we had a TAC meeting on, a TAC meeting on 32nd, uh, the Division 7, uh, they said that the, uh, they said that the. Paul can be completed April, would be completed April 5th or by April the 30th. And as I said earlier, and as I said earlier, that the J pass is supposed to October of 2023, October of 2023. Um, and the James dues for the MPOs, for the MPO 2, 23, is 861, is 861 cents. N C D O, um, N C D O, um, they have a robust fund, they have a robust fund valley, and they're on firm, um, but like every, they're working on how to deal, they're working on how to deal with, have gone way over budget, um, delay and, um, delay applies and labor. So, so a lot of it's are put on hold, or figure out how they're going, and figure out how they're going, and had projects that have doubled, uh, you know, from the, you know, from the, uh, and their meeting is April 26th, April 26th. Then Paul and I with Wright Archer, and Wright Archer at Wilson here at the Town, March the 24th, and at that meeting, and at that meeting, we close out of East Forstrian Bridge, Pedestrian Bridge, the Lydia close out, the encro, close out, the encroach approval for Menon Hall, the Oakdale Side, the Oakdale Socks, the E guard rail, um, guard rail, um, and we could picture from the accident, from the accident, the fence with the, um, um, we also, out the pedestrian, the pedestrian at East Fork Road, road, uh, DOT to look again, asked DOT to look again. You know, they put some additional, uh, for pedestrian, uh, for pedestrian, but we still had this with folks there, with folks there, and so they were to look at that signalization there, station there. And we also taught the black powder, um, crossing, and actually, we went over there with them, Paul and I, and, and discussed what DOT, what DOT requiring. Uh, since that, of follow-up emails with Menon Hall, Menon Hall, encouragement has been approved of the town, and part of the town, and Paul, you come up here, you can then tell when I say something, you can then tell when I say something wrong, tell them. But, um, so that encroach, um, so that encroach for Menon Hall has been returned.
It has.
And the town, and ordered equipment.
We have not ordered it yet, it is, we have not ordered it yet, we'll order it with our sign.
Okay, all right. Um, all right. And then, um, advise the week of April, advise the week of April, the 20th, DOT staff viewing, the East flows out, and flows out. And walk through is to be, is that week for Lydia, uh, Lydia, and that, like, said he would keep pushing to get these, he would keep pushing to get it as soon as possible. Like, next week, they're saying, next week, they're saying, these things will be done. And, and more about, and, and more for a guard rail at that, Paul, me, yes, I know, will it leave me, yes, I know, will the guard rail?
Good.
But he said, uh, he said, an email after that, that he, to the area traffic engineer, and they will conduct, and they will conduct reality review. We'll look at accident report, accident report, roadway conditions, metrics of the roadway, of the roadway, the degree of that curve, banking, um, and banking, uh, accident history, a final report will, and a final report, this usually takes a couple to compile, to compile, and review, uh, and he'll loop, but he said the loop, but he said, traffic engineer state, if we have a true, if we have a true safety on the roadway, adding a guard rail may not be the best answer. So, answer, so, why they must study.
Bring me to those meetings.
Yeah.
Bring me to those meetings.
Yeah. Sidewalk is, our sidewalk is a town, for the town to access to DOT, esemes to DOT. And the Gannaway, uh, uh, Devonous Walk, very hard, is up to us now, sorry, is up to us now, it's on the, the follow-through. Uh, but then, uh, but then on the powder pedestrian cross, let you say whatever you want.
I'm, 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 of the owners, um, to, and we've, and we've just, due to his certain hours of the day schedule, there are certain hours of the, for him, and I'm hoping we can tomorrow, or, or done tomorrow, or, or Thursday. He, he's willing to listen, he's willing to listen, spoken to counsel persons, counsel person, and, um, try to find a solution, we want to try to find a solution.
Yeah, as far as what DOT is, is requiring, is, is requiring, you might want to just.
We're looking at, um, our quest is really for pedestrian, our quest is really for pedestrian road from Town Hall, Black Powder, uh, Black Powder. Uh, it's really about getting from this corner, you know, directly across, you know, directly across, uh, Main Street. We're looking at, is the, the height of the sidewalk, the, the height of the sidewalk could be below it on the opposite side, indicating, needs, indicating, needs a handrail, and they want a cat ramp, um, to tie ramp, um, to tie sidewalk, do the main entrance, and we need to talk with you, we need to talk, and also look at some options, one great points about, points about, you know, there are other ways to solve this, to solve them, it doesn't necessarily have, uh, uh, or, or putting in a zigzag handicap, a zigzag handicap ramp on there, that, uh, go, uh, could go, um, over towards, go in that way, and then go in that way, and accessibility routes.
So, the, with the owner, and then do what, how receptive, do what, how receptive things, and they'll have to get back with DOTs?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. But it seems like the issue is, but it seems like the issue is pedestrian head.
Yeah.
It's how dug in.
Yeah.
It's how dug in they own it with the convention versus solution, versus looking at, uh, a more feasible solution, a more feasible solution.
Talked a little bit about lots, trying to get some, just trying to get some more light, that's been, I can't see people come from there, uh, from there. But DOT did, anything they could off, anything they could offer up to the town to just additional lighting, put some additional lighting, lights.
Yes. In my, the town, had a great rid of a lot of the overhead, rid of a lot of the overhead, bristile lighting in the area.
Yeah.
Previously, um, previously, um, so unless we go to like a cob, the other, the other solution, adding a lot, or standard acorn, or standard acorn.
I, just quick things, one than the other, faster than the other, um, closeout for Lydia Bridge Sidewalk, um, Bridge Sidewalk, lighting be completed now or before that, if this will be now or before that, if this will be.
I, I do not, I mean, I do not, I mean, through Duke entered, tied to the sidewalk, tied to the sidewalk, a contract outside.
We don't, we don't have any lighting on our, we don't have any lighting on Lydia, underpass, underpass.
There are, there are three that are on track now to get put in, three more we're working on, and three more we're working on railroad corridor.
Thing is, is, uh, the other thing is, is, uh, is what from the state, intersection here coming, intersection here coming from GTCC on Main, a, no team, a red going on to Gil, uh, so I think that's gonna, uh, so I think that's gonna impact, and sending traffic down, and sending traffic down that.
I, I followed up with, with that one, I mean, that with, with that one, unintended, a reaction had to the request for the crosswalk, for, for the crosswalk.
Having lived on the other side, uh, for the last 20 years, I can, uh, for the last 20 years, I can, that's been kind of a, a long time, a long, so, I mean, you do to try to curb that, to try to curb that, and it could be great.
A lot of sense, thanks, a lot of sense.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you. That's all that I have.
Actually, I'd like, stand up here for another 10, sit up, stand up here for another. I've got at this point is just again, one is just again, a lot of appreciate Anna and Scott for what, to Anna and Scott for what they've done. The parks piece of this, it's, it's a big piece of this, it's, it's a big deal. It's good to see some tra, uh, some traction, traction, and the kids enjoy the, uh, so, so, it's all good.
Did you have any meetings? Did you have any meetings?
Um, our AA Communities Committee had, the First Communities Committee had the three-part educational series, um, entitled Fraud Wound, um, so it was good kickoff, um, so it was good kick. We had folks here watching, um, folks could, um, folks could, and going from home, um, from home, um, and watch via our YouTube channel, or live, or all, they're live, or all later on. So certainly, if you missed that, you can go, um, you can go on the website and get the link to the, or you may already know how to get right, or you may already know how to get right there, uh, that. It was great, you know, the, the present, great, you know, the, the presenting, and we spoke about different type on, and, and, uh, you know, and, uh, you know, part things, kind of the area, that type of thing, so I, area, that type of thing, so I, you know, a lot from it. Um, we could probably pick a little, or something, if not a whole lot. Our next two, our next two, three-part educational series, the next, um, April 28th, um, April 10:30, is going to be For Living Smarter, For Living Smarter, and on.
I'd like to do that.
I know, that's good for everybody. I know, that's good for everybody. And then on May 25th, um, the Home Fit Program is the Home Fit Pro, focus on how to make a job home so you can stay there as long as you, um, and all of those, um, and all of those, the Town of Jamestown website, and, um, you can, more, um, you can, them from there and get the link. Um, we're going to be hosting, we're going to be hosting, folks don't want to, from home, you can certainly watch from home, you can certainly, at Center at 10:30 on those days, it in a group, or, and watch it in a group, or those dates and times don't work, come later on the YouTube, watch them later on the YouTube channel. I have high hopes, it was very, it was great, and I feel, the first one was great, and I feel, get better and, and bring more.
Cool. Thank you for your effort.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, it's great.
Do we have any other business, oh, I'm, um, sign up for public comment? Do you have any other, okay, do you have any other business, council?
You go first.
You go first. You go first. Well, I want to, um, I, I did, um, I, I did go log that Rebecca sent out on the short, sent out on the short regulations, um, and I know we've had some question with staff, session with staff, um, that plan in the process of going, in the process of going, uh, uh, look at ordinance, creating ordinance, and there's been some new development on a federal, uh, on a federal case. However, I read briefly, I've read briefly this black and, and look, but it looks like there's, but it looks like there's are some things too. They have a whole lot of teeth, have a whole lot of teeth, but I wonder if we should forward, uh, or to look at what, or to look at what things we can actually, ordinance, they're in ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think, um, and, you know, we've all, and, you know, we've all, since about short-term rentals, and that type of thing.
Yeah.
And that type of thing, and, you know, whether it's something concerned might happen, or just concerned might happen, or I talked to us and said, you know, in my neighborhood that has been purchased, my neighborhood that has been purchased exclusively used as, as an overnight, as, as an overnight rental property, and so, you know, it's a gray area, you know, I know, area, as our planning department knows about, um, and, and communities across the country, much a gray area, much a gray area, as this is business operating in a family residential, a single-family residential area, or is it's being used at home, people are sleeping at it, at home, people are sleeping at it. And so, you know, we were notified, uh, we were notified that that decision had come down, and it does, you know, it was still, and it does, you know, it was still, so, um, it's, take things out of their ordinance, take things out of their ord, work such as, um, making folks who own short-term rentals register, um, with the town, but, you know, from the school of government, what, like, there might be some options, there might be some options, interested in, uh, talking with Tom Terrell, who's been, talking with Tom Terrell, who's been seller land use attorney, and just see, um, um, what are the, what are the options.
I did speak to them just briefly before the, just briefly before the, that we wanted to talk more at length about, more at length about, he agreed and touched, so, that's, we're touched, so, that's, on that one.
Right, thank you so much.
And I appreciate you for bringing that, and I appreciate Martha, because I think, you know, we are, I know that staff is probably, question, that staff is probably, and so now with this kind of.
Well, and you know, it's been a big, it's been a big, in the news here, and state market, the state market, investment companies that are, and, and buying homes, and buying homes, seeing cash on layover list price, layover list price, and in neighborhoods, is, is putting, is putting out of the housing market, uh, and, and, uh, and, and they vanish, they're an investor, they've got the cash, so, got the cash, so, becoming quite common, which is, there was an article in Journal this morning, I read, Journal this morning, I read, I think it was in Walker, um, of course, um, of course, how people that are to, um, to, um, that, they're doing it through associations, and associations, and missions and bylaws, some of which, of course, the town does not, which, of course, the town have anything to do with human missions, nor would they, nor would they. Um, um, they restrictions have been, some of the restrictions have been to, uh, there's only certain homes that can be homes, that can be property, or if you buy, you can't rent it, thus, here, thus, an company would be wanting to buy it, if they be wanting to buy it, if they did it right away, and there are individuals, or individuals, or in competition, housing market, so, market. So, I, I know legally, it's gonna be, but, it's be a nightmare, but it's, and, and it's one of those, try to be proactive and have, try to be proactive and have, as that staff has happened, which they have much more knowledge than I do, they have much more knowledge than started reading the articles, and the real estate business are telling me, you know, about what's happening, about what's happening, some, disservice to folks, disservice to folks, I mean, buy a house.
The, the conclusion at the end of the, the conclusion at the article, or the judgment without, um, is very, um, is very profound, um, and very matter of fact, a matter of fact, it did leave some, that I think a discussion with us, I think a discussion with us, would at least give us a, um, a, um, a way of doing versus just, versus just, I think about it, or we just keep putting, um, I am a, and I am a, everybody knows, it's your house, it's your house, leave me alone, it's my house. Um, but I also understand what in neighborhoods and that sort of thing, neighborhoods and that sort of, the, the calmness of a neighborhood when you've got, uh, when you've got multiple cars and traffic that are in and out of it, and know they're in and out of it, um, as, you know, as well as, you know, the house, and if there's nothing, they do it. Um, I went and looked at that one particular, I went and looked at that one, and it's a very nice one, that we've just been alert. nice, and that we've just been alerted on, or told, just been alerted on, or, very nice, yard was cut, yard was cut, didn't look any different from any one of the other homes. So, I, I'd go with caution, and go with caution, and go with somebody who is professional in it, and can advise, professional in it, and can advise, that would be a spent for the time, spent for the time.
Yeah, me too. I think that's a lot, I was.
I, I had a lot, I, I had a, I guess my only question that I'm going with at this point, on go with at this point, for a matter is, is, we come to a, come to a, Matt had conversations, I've had conversations about, and they're, have they doing, and not doing, in our neighborhood, and riding around in vehicle, or have put signs on, as we put signs on, as did, from the very get-go, because that they're using vehicles, that they're using around, and look for violations.
I've had several conversations, I've had several with the owner, Brandon, the vehicle, the vehicle in question, aluminum door, aluminum door, so magnetic decals, don't current have, don't current trying to find a different solution to put those, to put those decals on. We, we thought about that, and we're, we're trying to find a, we're, we're trying to find a solution.
The answer is no, they haven't, or they're.
At this, as of this moment, I don't believe have, got, have gotten us that, but, gonna work with him to get that, trying to work with him to get that.
We told the public upfront that it wouldn't be, you know, a sneaky looking being around, that they would be marked, that they would be marked, we're allowing this to come and happen, and is that a violation, and that they're not displaying as they're displaying, as they're displaying? Notify, you know, when they're riding slow, pictures of people, pictures of people, that sort of thing?
If that is in fact in the contract, then it made it in the contract, then it would be a, but, I remember.
It, it's not in the actual written contract, the contract, yeah, it's not in the, yeah, it's not in the, the contract, but it was selling feature of, liars would, you know, go out, liars would, you know, go out and try to help people with solution, be in marked vehicle, be in marked vehicle, and I don't mean like police marked, something that says who they are, something that says who they are, an arm of us, we, one of our, and, one of our trucks out to somebody's residence, and without it, having something, without it, having marking on it.
That's a reasonable request, but it's a reasonable request, but if it down in his agreement, the town, the town call it a breach of contract, certainly a pile can, can, can require, it makes safety issue, if, safety issue, if nothing.
When did we ask, when did this issue with Ann, I mean, when did this issue with Ann Mark Clark first I'm hearing about?
It's been a couple of weeks, it's been a couple of weeks, if I stated correctly, it's been a little.
Is it just one vehicle, just one vehicle?
Apparently my understanding is they have five, they have five, that are out in the field, they have four vehicles, have four vehicles, they have vehicles, vehicles, they're trying to find a fifth vehicle, buff or used vehicles, tough or used vehicles right now, and, you know, I'm not running, you know, I'm not running into this, but, I had conversations about him, I've had conversations about him getting that vehicle marked, so, you know, we'll do our very best to solve that just as soon as we can, that just as soon as we, yeah.
So, is he driving a company vehicle, company vehicle, is that vehicle that they do, our inspection, earns a company vehicle?
It's a personal vehicle that they are paying, John, yeah.
Any, any other, do I have a motion to go, do I have a motion to go?
Uh, make a motion session for General Statute, this session for General Statute, 143318, to discuss matters related to attorney client privilege, 301 Lee Street and 2216 Gilbert College Road.
On favor?
On, on.
All person.
Open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The town attorney informed the council, informed the county that the lien for demolition, demolition cost that was filed against the property located 301 Lee Street still remains unpassed. If it has not been, if it has not been end of April, then make a motion that we, a motion that we, our attorney, to file suit, to enforce the lawsuit, to enforce the, and the mayor and manager are all to sign the complaint on behalf, to sign the complaint on behalf of...
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Good night.
Good night.